You call the work session to order. Roll call Vernon.
Here.
Jerry.
Here.
Aiden.
Here.
Hi.
Here.
Ben.
Here.
All five are here. All of the public, public comment will be allowed at the mayor's discretion during work session. This is an exclusive of items requiring a public hearing. The mayor reserves the right to limit the total amount of time for public comment. Please remember, the city council staff will not engage in a dialogue or debate with any speaker pertaining to any comments made. If anyone would like to speak at this time, please wait to be recognized by the mayor. Remember to state your name and address for the record. If you're online and would like to participate, please type your name in the chat room and wait to be recognized before unmeeting and speaking. Is there anybody here that? Like to speak? Do you have anybody online? Moving on, work session agenda items, city liability insurance twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four renewal. Mr. J R Riley.
Please. Thank you, everyone. I am J R Riley with Riley Company from Leavenworth. We are your insurance agent and your renewal actually comes up April first. I had a chance last meet, last week to meet with staff to go through the full renewal. I know what you have in front, what we're sent out is kind of a one-page summary to kind of keep it simple. When I went, met with staff, we went through about a fourteen-page summary, so in a lot more detail. I also have that summary here tonight. I'm, I'm willing to go through as much detail of this as you actually want to. I will give you a quick recap before diving into this too much. About two years ago was the last time that we took your account to market. At that time, we were with a company called One Beacon and Intact is, they kind of changed names. They actually withdrew from the market in the state of Kansas for municipality business. At that time, we went and got a quote from EMC Insurance Company, which is your current carrier, and Travelers Insurance Company at the same time. Travelers at that time was about two or three thousand dollars less, but they had a significant higher deductibles and things of that nature to where it just didn't make as much economic sense to take the risk for such a small savings at that time. Since then, EMC had a very favorable renewal last year from a rate standpoint. As you will see on this renewal, the premium is up. There's no doubt about that. The premium dollars is up. I won't bore you with everything going on in the, in the world of insurance right now, but it, there's clearly a lot of changes going on after the first year. I hate to be the guy that comes here and blames things on inflation, but it's clearly a factor in the insurance world. All of our insurance companies, it's not just EMC, are really taking a look at property values. And I can assure you that whether it's other cities, counties, school districts have felt this immensely. Property rates are going up, deductibles are going up. The reinsurance market actually just got killed at, in twenty twenty-two. All of that renewed around January first and insurance companies basically pay insurance to these reinsurance companies. And so what happens is that those costs get passed down to their customers. Again, I don't want to bore you with all of that. We were actually fairly pleased with the renewal quote that we got from a rate perspective. One of the things that the insurance companies are taking a look at, which I think is a good thing, are the values that we're insuring different buildings for. Clearly, what they are finding and what we are seeing is the cost to repair and to replace buildings today due to construction materials, shortage of labor, and all of those things are skyrocketing compared to where they were just even two or three years ago. Selfishly, I will tell you too, I come to meetings like this, I'm not just with you all, but even in private business. And, you know, everybody has a tendency to say, well, you know, insure my building for a million dollars. And you blink and seven and eight years go by and you're still insuring that building for a million dollars. And clearly it's costing a lot more to repair and replace it today. What EMC did at the time, last year was they came out and did kind of a replacement cost appraisal for all of your buildings. The net result of that is an increase in the values. And that's what you're seeing up here on the, on the PowerPoint, or you can see in the highlighted section of the proposal. Where last year for, if we just add up all of your values at the bottom, you can see they came up with a, a limit of about sixteen million four hundred and fifty-three thousand. Whereas on the renewal, they're proposing a total values of about twenty, a little over twenty-one. Were the two areas that really came into play was the water treatment plant. They've raised about four million dollars. And on City Hall, we currently haven't insured roughly. I mean, it's, it's been insured for roughly about a half a million bucks and now basically it's going to a million dollars, which I think we could all agree it probably would take more to replace even this building than a half a million dollars in today's world. Those are the two buildings. You might have gotten a spreadsheet from me earlier or from, from staff. They originally came out with values EMC did that were much higher on lift stations and things like that. When I met with Zach, Gene was a big help to give us some values. We were able to go back to EMC, negotiate those down, and that ended up saving about four thousand dollars off of the spreadsheet that you might have originally received. With that, I mean, I will just kind of tell you, this program covers the property of the city, the general liability, the equipment, the auto, the public officials coverage, which is what is protecting you all and serving in your producer duties, the law enforcement, legal liability and your cyber liability coverage. I will tell you, the cyber liability is an ever-changing and ever-evolving world. Cities such as yours are being targeted. I am very familiar with the claim that we have in our office right now at the city of about your size that was held for ransom for eight hundred thousand dollars. And so it's happening. I can tell you, we're seeing real life examples of it. So you have the coverage. It's, it's a good limit. But again, good coverage to have. I'm not going to minimize any sort of premium increase. Or, you know, as I say here, that we were pretty pleased with it. If you take a look at the total bottom line of the premiums, you'll see that last year your premium was roughly a hundred and eight thousand. Whereas proposed right now, we're at a hundred and thirty-one thousand. That's about a twenty-two percent increase. Again, I will tell you though, the property values are up about thirty-five percent. Or, I'm sorry, the property values are up about thirty percent and the premium's up about thirty-five percent on your property cover. So when you talk to, you know, insurance companies, the real net rate increase that they're increasing by is five percent. You're just, you're kind of buying more coverage within that premium. So I will tell you, EMC and Travelers are the two largest insurance companies in the state of Kansas. By number of accounts of municipality business, EMC by far writes the most. Travelers probably writes the most premium because they tend to write the larger cities. Whereas EMC tends to write cities that are under a hundred thousand. That applies to school districts also. EMC is also unique in that they have a safety dividend program. So what that is, is that if the book of business of municipality business is profitable during the course of the year, then they will refund half of the profit back to the clients that are members of the municipality program. Last year, the city of Baser was refunded about just a little bit shy of thirteen thousand, twelve thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars because of the safety dividend program. And it does not matter if you are profitable or not profitable. You could have a hailstorm. If the overall program is profitable, you basically get to contribute in that program. Travelers does not offer that. So it is a little unique program. For the last fifteen years, they've averaged about seventeen percent return of premium in that program. Again, I hate to talk too much about it because it's not guaranteed. I don't tell any of my clients to budget it. But it does speak to EMC, their staying power and, and the volume of, of the municipality business that they do handle. My last comment is, from our perspective, we tend to like to market business no more than about every three years. That's not to say we won't. If there's mitigating circumstances, generally speaking, there haven't been. The reason we don't like to do that is we don't think we're doing you a service. There aren't a whole lot of insurance companies that are out there writing municipality business. If the same company see your account every year, every two years, they tend to not just give the best price. So we do think there's value in kind of waiting a couple of years. I know most of you are familiar. There are some losses in your history if we go back five years, which is what a lot of insurance companies take a look at. The good news is for you, those losses are in the fourth and fifth year. They're, they're getting ready to fall off. So I do think that's an added benefit that if we look to the future, your last two years with EMC have been extremely profitable. I mean hardly any, I mean, a total of almost a little over five thousand dollars in losses the last few years. So very, very strong track record. You earned, you know, a small rate increase, which, and again, on the net rate, it is certainly below what we're seeing. I know I've done a lot of talking. I'm happy to answer any questions. I know from talking to staff, Maria's here. The public officials and the law enforcement are, are coverages that we tend to call your professional liability. I know from our conversations that staff would prefer to have the coverage for that be what we call a consent to settle. Meaning that if there is any sort of litigation, that the city itself gets to approve any sort of settlement agreement that would be made. EMC does not offer that currently. So we do have that coverage out to some other specialty programs to just see if that would be available and if so, at what cost. And I will definitely report back and let you know if that's applicable.
Thanks, JR. Does anybody have any questions for JR? Vernon?
Yeah, my, uh, the information I have here, my packet, the bottom line total premium is not matching what you have on there.
Which is the hundred and thirty-five thousand?
Right.
That was before we got the lift station values reduced and that's the four thousand dollar savings that I mentioned. We just got that late today. So that hundred and thirty-one thousand is the correct figure. By getting the values of the lift stations back to the number that, that we met with and Gene recommended, we did. We all, I mean, I'm being very candid. We all struggle with the values on lift stations because what can happen, you know? Obviously, there's the value of the pump. But as far as the infrastructure and, and there might be the generator and things above ground, but a lot of the value will probably not be damaged, you know, or what type of coverage, you know, what kind of exposure is really going to damage a lot of it. So we were able to push back though, and yet it was about a million, a little over a million in value lower from their original quote.
But the subject I see really helps with the explanation. I don't like discussing or voting or even looking at issues when there's something on here that's not matching what I have here. So Kathy did a good job of getting this to me and thank you, Gene, for the work she did to help get this decreased.
Sharon?
No, I guess just in general assessment, I see, you know, values are obviously up a lot. And with that is kind of the increase, I think if you were proposing to us that our values weren't increasing at all with that type of increase, I'd be very concerned of what's actually going on here. But with that, I don't have any other questions. Thank you. Nope.
Hey.
No, makes sense. Appreciate it.
Thanks, JR. Appreciate presentation.
Thank you. We appreciate the business, obviously, and, and I will be in touch with Maria. Possibly, and we'll obviously get circle back on some of the topics.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very much. Moving on, item number two, discussion of amendments to the city code related to permitting and building or construction work performed by a property owner. Maria, I believe, are you handling that one?
Well, actually.
Oh, Crystal? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I and Maria have been going through, as you know, the municipal code, the zoning regulations and everything, trying to find any inconsistencies or things that need to be updated. And one of the things that we have come across recently are a couple of areas in our building code that are maybe a little ambiguous. The first of those is section eight dash four, which is work by property owners. Our code does allow for work by property owners to be done on their own home. They do not have to be licensed in order to do that. They do still have to be inspected and meet code, but they don't have to actually be licensed themselves. However, the way that the code is currently written is that it says that the intention is that the homeowner, that the, that the builder, the homeowner will live in the home, but there's no actual requirement that they do. And as such, someone could, over the course of a year, say multiple times, say, oh, I purchased this house and I plan on living there and I'm going to rehab this house. And then, oh, turns out I went ahead and I sold that house, but now I've got this next house and I do intend on living in this house and doing this repeatedly. So one of the items that we are saying that, that we're recommending to change is limiting that to them only being able to do this on one house per year. We are not wanting to limit the number of permits they can pull on that house because maybe they purchased a house that needs to be completely renovated and they're going to need several permits. But we're limiting it to one home per year. So we have added that in to the code for you to consider. And that's on the page six of your document, if you haven't already looked at that. And then the second item is that we do allow for a contractor to, to pull a building permit, obviously, and a licensed contractor to pull the building permit. But again, what can sometimes happen is a contractor who is licensed appropriately is pulling a contract on behalf of someone who may not be licensed appropriately. And then just kind of walking away. So they do all of the upfront paperwork, but then when it comes time to really get to work, they're not overseeing this work at all. And so we wanted to add a provision, again, that just states that the expectation is that any person whom a permit is issued shall, shall be the person performing the work or the person overseeing such work and ensuring that is consistent with and compliant with this chapter. So this is really, these are just a couple of items we want to shore up and make sure that the intention is very clear and that the enforcement of it, that frankly, staff is able to. Have any questions?
I'll start. I have a question for you. Under your first one, you're saying that they can buy one house per year, the one house per year and say they're going to live in it. So what happens? Ten months after they've started building and everything, they don't, they put it for sale, everything. Is there going to be some kind of penalty or something like that there? Because I mean, they could come in and say they're going to, you know, live there and then ten minutes later, you know, they have it for sale and they never did plan on living there.
And I understand, certainly, Mayor, I understand that. And we feel like the provision of only allowing one home per year to be rehabbed under this code will help with that. Hopefully, people will be honest. Certainly, that's what we hope. And I know sometimes that's not the case, but for people who are not being necessarily honest, they aren't able to do it over and over again in the course, you know, of a year, like they currently.
So in, on the second part, who screams that if they come in, somebody comes in, pulls a permit and then he's basically pulling the permit for somebody else to build it and, you know, they walk away. How, how do we know that's going to, not going to happen and who's going to check on it?
Sure. So one of the items that you have to pull when you're getting a building permit is you have to fill out your construction list. So your contractor has to come in and fill out the construction list of all of the subcontractors and their contact information and everything. That is required with the building permit. And then staff will, you know, it's one of those things you, you are signing your name to it and you are saying that you're going to follow the rules. And if staff ever has any reason to believe that that is not the case, then we would investigate that. And then further, you know, if there is an issue, like if there's an inspection issue or something, it's going to come back on the contractor who pulled, like that's who we're going to call and say, hey, you've got this issue and you're the one who has to get this fixed. And if this is a repeated issue, then there could potentially be ramifications for that down the road. So making sure that the, the responsibility is falling on the contractor who is pulling the permit and making sure that they understand that, you know, that's a risk they're taking on. If they are going to allow someone to moonlight under their license, they are taking on a risk.
Are we going to send something out to the, all the contractors that build here in Baser and let them know things have been changed then, or how we plan on handling that?
I think that's something we could absolutely do. If the city council feels like that we would direct staff to do that, that we could absolutely send out a letter to all of our builders that, that do business in the city.
Thank you so much. Does anybody else have any questions?
I have a dumb question. I'm sure I should know the answer to this. I've embarrassed in front of everybody. So I were to buy a house to flip here in town and was going to do the work myself. I can't.
So under this code, you, unless you are licensed, you really shouldn't be doing that. No. Now, if you're buying it to rehab yourself and for you and your family to live there, then, then certainly, again, it has to meet code and it has to be inspected and everything. But no, if, if you're buying a, you know, a fixer-upper to flip it.
Do we think that's never occurred in Baser? Wondering. Okay.
I'm.
Quit my questions.
I mean, I don't love licensing in general for that, that as one of the reasons. And on this one, I'm curious, kind of similar vein that I would like to see the limit at two because I could see somebody fixing their own house to sell it and then moving and wanting to do repairs on the new house in the same year. But that's just a thought. Maybe not.
Sorry, I didn't say that aloud either.
When you say ramifications, what would, what would, do you help define that? I mean, would we be talking about a penalty, a fine of some sort? Are we talking about next time they come in to pull a permit, we go, no, you're not allowed to do that anymore here? Is that?
You know, if, if you violate the city's code enough times, I think there does come a point, and I don't know exactly, you know, we have a hard line drawn in the sand.
Okay.
By any stretch of the imagination. But yeah, if you violate the, the ordinance of city enough times, eventually it would be, we're not issuing you permits anymore. You're not following the rules. Yeah, and also as to that, we have a general penalty provision in the city code. So if there is a violation of this section, if it gets adopted, that could be prosecuted and the person could potentially be fined by the municipal court judge if it gets to that point. So in addition to not being granted permits in the future, there could be a penalty assessed in court.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Glad to hear the intent on all this and the intent's good. So questions are more general.
Of course.
Sharon?
So the owner of a rental property, can that prepare or perform construction on that rental property?
Under this code, they could do that on one rental property. If they own it, then you could do it on one. But if you own multiple rentals throughout the city, then no, you would need to, you need to either be licensed or hire a licensed contractor.
So an owner does not live in the property, he runs the property out, that owner can still do the work?
Yeah, I think so. The, the, the intention of this is certainly that they own the property, property and they intend for the property to remain under their ownership. And that we may need to tweak the language on this a little bit to make that really clear.
I agree because the permanent occupancy makes it, makes me agree that it's, it reads like you couldn't do that work on a rental that you're not living in.
So we can, we can tweak that.
Anyone else have any questions? Any questions guys? Thank you, Crystal.
Sure.
There was some comment about raising it for, to be, permits wouldn't be issued more than twice per year. Is there interest? If we return with this ordinance for raising it from one to two properties for just private residential, or do you just want staff to recommend something?
Well, I guess, so one other option would be if there's some process to acknowledge that there's variance in that scenario. And I don't know what that would look like if it has to be written in.
For changing the verbage to ownership versus lived permanent residence? For changing the verbage to ownership versus lived permanent residence? Yeah, I could really go for two that, because if you have your house in a rental or two rentals, there are some people down with a handful of rentals.
Let me make sure I'm hearing that right. So if you have two rental properties, you can still get a permit. You can still have those two rental properties. And you're the owner of those rental properties can perform the work itself. Or as it was initially presented, they can work on one. One rental property versus.
Yeah, as I say, I think I'm kind of confused now because I thought at the beginning you were saying that our choices are if you own it, you either hire somebody licensed, right, to do the work? Or if you're going to do it yourself and your intention is to live in it, correct?
Yes, that was the origin, that was the original.
So in vernon scenarios, there is zero intention in living in those rental properties.
Right. So that's that's what Maria is asking for clarification on. If there's consensus of the council that we should amend this so that it's clear that it's ownership based and not necessarily occupancy based. That if you own the property, because maybe you rent it out and then perhaps this being limited to two, so that that would provide a little bit of wiggle room for someone who owns a couple of rental properties. Or as council member Naples suggested, the process of, you know, moving from one home to another.
Can we keep that separate between renters and people that own rental property and actual builders? And I'm because without getting into it, the actual problem has been with some builders that are doing that on a brand new house and they're going to live in it. And then they they never live in, they never intended to live on it. So I understand that the language needs to be changed, but can we come up with something different or we have one for renters and one for actual builders then? Maybe then it won't be quite so confusing. And I want to add just a little bit of clarification. Mr. Mayor, you mean one for owners and one for just?
Right. Yes. Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, that's exactly. That's, yeah, I think that would cover it if we do it that way.
So it sounds like the the direction to staff is to come back with an ordinance with crafted language, making a differentiation between a business that is doing new construction and maybe some renovation type activity.
That's what my opinion is. And that goes back to Sonny's point. You know, now I can go and buy a home, I can flip it. I'm the owner. I'm doing the work myself. So I can flip that home and stay within the preview of this of this ordinance. So that's where, you know, it's just maybe some tweaking.
Okay. Well, I think between the three of us, we have enough direction to come back to the regular meeting with an updated draft. And if we come back and it needs more tweaking, then we'll just send it back to the next work session for some additional feedback.
More questions from anybody? Thank you. Thank you, Crystal. Appreciate it.
You are welcome. You're not rid of me yet.
Moving on to item number three, PRZ zero zero four two two, request to rezone attractive land from R three multifamily to CP two general business district.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a nine and a half acre tract of land that's currently zoned R three multifamily. And the planning commission did recommend seven to zero to approve the rezoning request to the CP two zoning district. The applicant has made that petition in order to ultimately construct a 20,000 square foot building, which will house their business to polish con polished and decorative concrete. This is at the very end of Briar Road there on State Avenue, right there highlighted in red. This will go before you for your regular session, obviously, at the end of the month for your approval or.
Anybody have any questions on this?
On that beyond consent agenda for rezoning?
You can.
Okay, put on consent. Item number four, acceptance of easements and right of way for the Baser Connected Projects, 155th Street Improvements Project and 158th Street Parallel Trail Improvements Metro Green Project.
Thank you, Mayor. Matty Waldick, Assistant City Administrator. This item on the agenda is a placeholder item that we'll have probably over the next several months as we continue to progress throughout this project. Of course, we had several easements and right of way dedications that we were able to obtain. But we continue to negotiate with property owners. We do have two easements that were signed very recently that will be included in your regular meeting packet. We have a third that we have a meeting with on Friday to execute those documents. Those tracks are the McClure Track on parallel. The Baser Lynnwood, I'm sorry, the Baser Library Tract, and then also the Miller Track that's on parallel as well. So we continue to work with property owners and we'll make sure to include those documents in your packet for your review and your consideration and accepting those easements for that project.
Anybody have any questions for Matty? Yes, okay. Thanks, Matty. Item number six, real estate purchase agreement between the city of Baser and Glinty Maset Trust.
I'm sorry.
I did, I missed five. The basketball. Item number five, consideration of placing no parking signs along Falcon Lakes Parkway from 147th Street East to K seven highway.
Mayor knew it might turn you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Dean Miracle Municipal Service Director. At the previous meeting, there was discussion about adding no parking signs along Falcon Lakes Parkway from 147th Street East to K seven. Municipal Service went out, put traffic count out here last week to get updated counts for that area of roadway. There's approximately 800 trips traveling east and west per day. And also the speed data that we had, the average speed was running 36 miles per hour. If anybody drove out there during the day, we're having vehicles parked from Aspen all the way down past 141st Street. There is a lot of pedestrian traffic. There's a lot of turning radiuses along the Clubhouse Drive area, 141st, all the way through there. So we would like to have discussion about the possibility of adding the no parking signs.
Anybody want to start out on there?
I'll I'll start, obviously, since I brought this up previously. Help me out on Falcon Lake Drive, like that's an arterial road, correct? We shouldn't be parking cars on an arterial road at any point. Isn't that correct? So I feel in my heart that those signs should have already been there in the first place. So I think this is just to a certain extent, kind of like what you were doing, you know, going through, making sure that everything jives and the wording and whatnot, that we're doing the same thing in regards to some of our streets as well. Just because the signs weren't there previously doesn't mean that they shouldn't be there already. Because people are parking there in the first place, just because there aren't signs, doesn't mean that they really should be parking there. And if you've been by there, I'll say there in one specific area, which is right where the driving range is with it coming and starting to get nice out. These cars are backing up to the point where there's a median in the in the road where Clubhouse Drive meets Falcon Lakes Drive. Cars are starting to back up to that point, which means some of the cars that are heading back on the westbound are almost unable to get by, which in my eyes, that's that's an issue. It's just a safety issue if nothing else. So and as you've shown here and stated that since May of 2021, we've moved on average from 690 vehicles up to, you know, 100 extra a day at 800, and it's only going to continue as we continue to build out that that backup nine. So in my opinion, it's a safety issue, and this is probably something that we should do.
Correct. And anything?
No, thank you.
Sharon?
My only thought would be those cars that are at the driving range, they can just park up in the parking lot.
That's correct.
With clubhouse and everything is.
Correct.
Hey, devil's advocate, parking lots fall an awful lot. I've actually started parking cars on brass to even make room. So I don't know how much rooms in that parking lot, because there's literally 30, 40 cars sometimes by that driving range. So I really don't know if there's. Not saying it is. Those are, that's going to be the only ramifications. Some parking in there alongside.
Emergency access needs to be maintained. And the reason I didn't have a comment earlier was why are we having so much more parking? Is it because of the construction there? Is it because of where the driving range is at? You know, I'm just.
Towards the middle of last year, they did significant improvements to the driving range, which has increased the traffic in that area.
Plus all the new bill, the building that's going on out there. Yeah, a lot more people out there. So do we think that after some of the construction dies down, that we'll see less parking on that street? No?
More or more.
There's gonna be more homes, more people living there.
Boulder's fourth.
People that's living there, but they have driveways.
Yeah, but they probably drive for convenience, so they're from their house over to the.
I'm just, you know.
Illegal to drive our golf carts down the street and sit there.
Yeah, I guess I guess my whole comments really need to be grounded in, you know, if you need to get a fire truck in there. If we need to get, please, a rescue in there. So I do support putting the putting the signs up, that that's going to enhance those two factories as well as it should also somewhat enhance the quality of life.
Yeah, that is a good question. If that's an arterial street, is the ordinance already require no parking? Or prohibit parking or?
Well, it's designated a collector.
Okay.
It's another thing like Crystal's trying to clear up in our comprehensive plan. It lists Garden Parkway, Baser Boulevard, Wolf Creek Parkway, Falcon Lakes Parkway. Clubhouse Drive is no parking, but there's no ordinance that goes with that under our traffic schedule. Then you have our design and technical specs, which differ from our comp plan, which we're working to get everything mirror in each other. So Clubhouse Drive is already posted, no parking. 143rd, you can only park on one side and the speed limit was just reduced a year ago. And with the speed on Falcon Lakes Drive or Falcon Lakes Parkway being the highest speed in the whole development is a big safety concern.
Anybody else have any questions or any more discussion on this item?
And I'm just trying to keep my mouth shut for what I want to say, so. I I'm in agreement, but we need to do it. I just keep thinking of the chief goes to go enforce our actions now.
I think your, I'm sure your comment, Councilmember Garber was in jest or not, but golf carts under state law can be permitted to operate on streets, but there has to be specific authorization by city ordinance for that. If that's something that you would want us to look at.
Yeah.
Brought up all the time.
I just wanted to let you know that is potentially an often understood.
Yeah.
What I guess one of the relevant things is there's potential, there's a proposal for a parking lot at the driving range, is that correct? What is the timeline of that project if approved?
We don't have a timeline. We have received communication from the owner of Falcon Lakes that there is a an intent to construct a parking lot, but as far as a timeline, we we do not have one.
I if there's safety concerns, I think we need to address it, but just that will help alleviate some of the counter concern.
Okay, so we're ready, moving it on. Then the next meeting, main meeting. Everybody, you guys, I'm moving it.
Yeah, I'm.
So we'll prepare an ordinance for your consideration at your regular meeting.
Okay. Number six. Real estate purchase agreement between the city of Baser and Glinty Maset Trust and Ladonna Maset Trust.
Thank you, Mayor. During the negotiations for acquiring right of way and easements for the 155th Street Project, we spoke with the Musset family about their property. They have a vacant lot at the corner of 155th and Elm. We are realigning Elm. That's a great aerial aerial shot. You can see on the east side of 155th Street, there's it's kind of catty corner to connect to Elm. So we are realigning that street as as part of the 155th Street Project. And as a result, we acquired a significant amount of right of way onto their property. They live out of state and they expressed a strong desire to sell this vacant lot to the city. The requested price in the contract is $25,000. That's for the balance of the parcel. This is within the city administrator spinning authority. However, this involves acquiring a property and we felt it was the prudent decision to bring it forth to council for your consideration. Staff is supportive of that, certainly along that corridor. It would be nice to have some property to maybe install a bench or some streetscape amenities. And we just have enjoyed working with the Musset family and they've done a fantastic job of keeping that property well manicured and mowed. And we're just excited for the opportunity and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions?
The the last point, the well manicured, that's something that we have, you know, bandwidth to add additional small plot, but it's disconnected from a lot of what we own, right?
Yes, we have spoken with municipal services and we feel comfortable keeping that well manicured look, especially on a high traffic corridor.
Perfect.
It's a great point.
And then future state, if if the sales tax is approved, that could be a small park area, pocket park.
Absolutely, absolutely, good.
No question. Good.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Do we have to change it and zone it to make it a park?
I don't believe so, but I can double check on that and and make sure to bring that information at the next meeting. I'd be happy to do that. Okay.
No other questions? Thank you. And move it on. Any consensus, moving on, consent?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. If there was a comment about zoning changes, so maybe if if no actions required to do a park consent agenda, and if there's a comment about it, we can discuss.
Okay.
I am, I am. I just, you know, I I I know just take care of that property over there and it's. So I just wondered if we needed to look at any zoning concerns, you know, what we would acquire the property.
Yes, sir. We'll make sure to research that.
Moving on to item number seven, request from Alfred Medina to discuss the amendment of ordinances related to the possession and maintaining of hens. Mr. Medina is here tonight. If you, when we get through discussing it, if anything, if you want to have some questions, we'll go from there. Okay?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So we received a written request from Mr. Medina as it relates to the possession and maintaining of hens. We included the memo that we received from Mr. Medina in your packet. And at this time, I'd I'd invite Mr. Medina up to the podium to maybe go over his talking points. And Mr. Medina, we really appreciate you being here and for submitting this information to us in advance. So thank you.
Well, thank you, ma'am. Thank you, council members, mayor of the city residents. Well, it was fortunate that you folks were discussing cost and inflation, running things, because that's exactly what I'm talking about. I think I I've been living in Basers since 2016. I bought the fifth house out of Center Point Estates right next to Field of Dreams. Where I I have an acreage on my property and I know that some of my neighbors, because they're not technically in the city, their their county, they have chicken coops. And I just thought for the longest, honestly, even before, I know in the past few months, there have been a lot of articles concerning rice costs of eggs and whatnot. But before that, I already was like, dude, I moved to Kansas for a reason. I want a garden, I want a backyard and, you know, I think having hens that give you eggs, especially when you have a growing family, it's really important. I don't think there's too much around that. Um, I don't think there's too much around that. Uh, I uh, I, I noted by looking at other uh similar cities uh that, you know, typically you're looking at something that uh a structure that uh will give you enough room uh to your neighbor of at least twenty five feet. You're looking at anywhere of uh a minimum four hens, hens, not roosters, but roosters, you know, uh, something of that nature. Um, I don't, I don't think it's anything that um that, that would seem out of uh uh um, out of our field of reasoning. Uh, we are a city that has a background in, in a farming community. Uh, we're not living in a big city for a reason. You know, we uh like the idea of it. I've talked to other neighbors, other neighbors are like, that's great, Tito, you go talk in the city for us. You know, I'll go to Hollywood, this is fine. Um, but it was just really the idea of, um, I know. Um, I know from where I'm living at, I can, I can, I can do something like that, but I understand that other neighbors aren't in situations where they can. Uh, or they might get, you know, complated on and I'm like, let's do this the proper way. Talk to the city, I've talked to the city, we'll change our uh local HOA rules concerning it. You know, should be all that difficult. Thank you very much for uh considering what I'm saying. I can read that, I mean.
No. Yeah, that's not necessary. We appreciate your comments, Mr. Medina, and we would.
Um, first of all, thank you for coming and doing it the right way. We appreciate that. And uh, any discussion on remaining one up here? I'll start with you.
Sure, yeah. Like I said, I appreciate the, the willingness to come and the desire to use your property to provide food for your family. Um, I was on the fence when I first read the title of the request, but looking at the noise level of hens, it sounds like they're actually uh, you know, hens do make some minor clucking, but it's lower than the level of dogs, which is allowed in our current ordinances. So, um, yeah, I, I'm, I'm for it. Um, so between our existing noise ordinance, limiting it to hens and some sort of distance requirement, that would be enough for me. I saw that a lot of the examples were distances from structures. I would lean a little towards distance from property line, just so even people in their yards are not disturbed by noise. But I, I think it's great.
Hi.
Um, I really don't have many questions on it. I think it'd be more of an issue at the HOA level for most of the communities.
Yeah.
And the HOAs can control their own neighborhoods through what they think's best for their HOA, so I think it's kind of being ruled correctly that way.
Have you talked to your, your HOA? What have they said about it?
Oh, um. We will stand.
No, you're okay. You're okay.
Well, uh, the previous officers, uh, the brother only a four-year-old H with it. And all the other ones that until now spoken to it, you know. Concerning this, nobody's started. If I can't sign a fight with the world against all of my problems. That's the idea of, uh, if you're going to do something like this, you have to have. Not trying to just have, so that's just true. And. I've been working.
Right.
As a chief there, chief for fence, the chicken. But um, I have not had a conversation with the president, he just turned over. Um, I don't really see any issues concerning it, honestly. I understand how to use it again, maybe they, they, they. I could always go that route. There's nothing that. Except say yes or.
Well, I am in support of this. I, I do like your idea. This is great. I think my question would be back to chief in regards to, we do have an animal control person. I, I don't know how we message this in a manner to the city where it's uh not just word of mouth, because if you do it and they go, oh, wow, well, he did it, I'm gonna. I, I can do this as well without knowing what the rules are and they just start throwing chickens out and then all of a sudden we have animal control going. We got chickens running all over the city because we allowed this. How are we going to put the parameters around this? I mean, I understand what you're saying here, but how are we going to adequately enforce this, right? So we don't have a mess on our hands. Um, so in some sort of messaging of here are the rules, this is, this is now allowed within city limits. Um, what's that really look like? Does your animal control person have capacity to take on something of this magnitude as well?
Go on, uh, thank you, Chief Kevin Self. You know, I think there was.
The, the, the question would really be more to, we do have an animal control person, correct? Yes.
On social media.
Okay.
And so that would probably be the first place to, to start. If the city council and mayor have an appetite to change in your ordinance.
Right.
We have, we as a police department have worked fairly closely with the city attorney and uh I'm sure that between uh the powers that be, we can devise some, some way to properly get it out of the city.
Okay.
That I'm not concerned with. Who am I concerned with the bandwidth that my animal control officer currently?
Okay, perfect.
We've got.
Got it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, um, yeah, I like the idea too. Um, especially what is it about six to eight dollars now for a dozen eggs at the store? And some stores you can't even find them. Um, so yeah, I guess, you know, if the city agrees with it, then it has to go to the HOAs. So for anybody that live in an HOA. Also, um, how do we decide how many hens somebody can have? Is it going to be a certain number for the entire city per person or is it going to be based on how much property you have? You know, or maybe somebody could have three, but somebody else could have five. Um, and then has anybody researched the other cities around that allow this? So that we know, you know, what are other cities doing and is it working well for them?
I, I've done some preliminary research on this. I looked at some other cities and the ordinances in the cities that allow chickens um for personal use are very detailed. There is a permitting process that goes to the city clerk's office. It's very specific about how many hens you can have. For example, one city says five hens per acre. Um, and there's no more, there's no variances allowed for that, but there is, you know, a permit fee, a renewal fee, um, animal control, for example, in one city goes out to the property to inspect the chicken coop to make sure that it's well ventilated, that the noise is not, you know, too loud, that this really doesn't become a nuisance for surrounding neighbors. Um, so like I said, pretty specific. But luckily we do have a lot of good examples around us, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel if there's interest from the council. But I think if this does progress forward, I would want to know whether you have any specifications that you want us to add to the ordinance or whether you want it to really just be staff recommendation on how specific are we getting on the coop and the living arrangements and the number, things like that.
So kind of back to Ben's point, my preference would be to keep it pretty minimal from a enforcement standpoint, that we don't really need to be involved unless there's complaints on the noise level will be my, my take on it.
That could be them. Yeah, no, that's fine. I just, um, those were just some of the things I was.
I think it's.
Yeah.
Questions, I think we're going to have to work on a lot of things, so. Vernon? Yeah, I expect the last about uh on two farms. One was a cattle farm, one was a chicken farm down in Georgia. And some of those coops down there were pretty good size. So my only concern would be what size would your coop be? Okay, so four to six. Some of those coops were over my head. Okay. All right. You answered my question. Thank you, sir.
I think Maria is what's, what's, we're all saying is, is that it's something that you need to maybe work on some kind of ordinance and bring it back to us uh at the next work session. And, you know, with some examples of how many we're going to allow per, you know, household. Uh, and I think it has to be in there very strong about it has to be approved from your HOA, whether, you know, first, um, before we can issue a permit for that. Um, but I think from four to six at, at the very most is going to be the, the limit that they have in the city. But uh, does anybody else have any things to add to that and what we would like for her to research?
But I think, I think Mr. Medina brought up a point that you said ADA, you mentioned, okay. 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 Okay.
Service animals.
Right, right, right. Right, right, right.
So I, you build that route and you're a real traditional campaign, where you're saying you can uh, uh, national professional or someone who knows in the national status to provide a letter that says that, hey, the person need to say.
And that sounds like that's going to supersede the HOA.
Yes, that would.
So, so to try to tie it into HOA approval first, I think is short sighted.
Well, yeah, and I would stay away from HOA just from a, that's, that's not their, the city's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, let, let you figure out if, if you can.
That out and change and rethink on that. But I, I understand other routes I could go.
Yeah.
That's, I was like the only tenant, but only uh homeowner that had an above ground pool for years. Right? That was a reasonable combination, well. So, but I know, I, I, I just was like, I can't get no person in this city that would like that. I can't, I can't. My wife is the one who wasn't glad I didn't. We have a water electric system. Coming up with kind of the recommendations. No, the only thing I'm trying to picture in my head is back thirty, thirty feet from the house, there's a property line. Like if I was going to do it in my yard, where the hell would I really put it? Um. So it may be more property in the way. Because I think I could pull one out of my neighbor's property line after this.
Mm-hmm.
Well, my neighbor would want one literally right on his property. And so I, I'll listen to you guys' whole reputation, but that's kind of my thought is.
So at the next work session, we'll come back prepared with research um from other cities. Um, and we'll provide a recommendation as it relates to uh the regulation of it. Uh, how many, uh, where the placement is and the ongoing responsibility of the, of the hen owners. Um, and we'll make sure to bring that back with enough uh research for your consideration at the next work session.
Okay. Let's take a building permit. Sorry.
We will make sure to include that in our research.
So the next work session, Kathy, is when? No, work session.
The twelfth.
Uh, so Mr. Medina, if you want to come back April the twelfth, you can hear, you know, what they propose and what the council piece was, you know, like, so. Thank you. Is there any need for executive session tonight?
No, Mayor, there is not.
We don't need a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, have we adjourned?
Have a motion, or here a second.
Oh, second.
Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.